Stand for the pledge.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome to the February 15th meeting of the Village of Rhinebeck Board of Trustees. The purpose of tonight's meeting is an informational session to present a plan for selective tree removal as it pertains to the line clearance that will be performed by Central Hudson in the coming days and weeks. And we will also be discussing the specifications to which the lines will be cleared. So I'm going to kind of provide an update. Anybody from the board who wants to comment and then we'll take comments from the public. We have a statement from Meg from the Tree Commission. We have a couple other members of the Tree Commission with us if they want to contribute to the conversation. So to date discussions have taken place at Tree Commission meetings, at a Village Board workshop, attended by the Tree Commission and Central Hudson, and at last week's Village Board meeting. The positions of Central Hudson and the Tree Commission have been defined and we've heard from two drastically opposed groups of residents. One that suggests we take Central Hudson's offer to remove as many trees as possible. This would result in a profound change to our streetscape and would leave many residents unhappy. The other might suggest that we pass a local law in an attempt to set a roadblock against trimming by Central Hudson. This may jeopardize the source of power that we all rely on in the completion of our daily tasks and would ultimately leave another group of residents unhappy. So residents of the village have been involved in the tree conversation long before most of us entered the conversation, likely before any of us were born. The trees were planted along these streets decades and centuries ago. Trees are important to the character of this community and the fact that an active Tree Commission exists along with a longer than five-year designation as Tree City USA should make this evident. If there remains any confusion, I'd like to reiterate that our Tree Commission has been involved in the current discussion since the start and there's no battle taking place between the Village Board and the Tree Commission, or Central Hudson for that matter. To suggest that one entity has disrespected the other is inaccurate. A group of dedicated people working together through a somewhat complicated and contentious issue would be a better description. To suggest that your elected Board of Trustees becoming personally involved by examining each tree and interacting with village residents in the process is a waste of time is insulting to the individuals and to the entire process. I would suggest that this might instead be a model for good government where elected officials take every opportunity to educate themselves on the issues and seek the input of their constituents prior to making decisions. I'd like to thank our Tree Commission led by Meg Crawford. Like I said, we have a statement from members Walter Cotter in attendance here, Nick Monaco in attendance, and I don't believe James Marshall's with us, for their commitment and willingness to present a potentially unpopular plan that they believe is the right plan. The Tree Commission serves in an advisory capacity to the Village Board and their recommendations have always carried great weight in any tree-related decisions, from the removal or trimming of individual trees, the selection of species for planting, specifications for the use of structural soil in the construction of sidewalks, design of tree wells to support the trees that are selected, and to this proposal of greater scale. It seems apparent that we still share the same basic goal of preserving the unique character of this village and is my feeling that compromises the solution that will prevail. The removal of some trees will allow the canopy to live and will allow for phased replacement of our trees. I'd also like to recognize Tom Johnson from our Highway Department. He's our resident tree guy on the payroll. I have an update. I had a discussion with Mike Galucci. He's the regional manager from Central Hudson on Friday afternoon. I have kind of a list of statements that he provided in reference to what we can expect here in the next couple of weeks as they come through. According to Mike, we should not expect to see a great deviation from past pruning practices. In 90 to 95% of the cases, it will appear the same as it did four years ago on the last pass-through. Those trees which present a clear V shape from past pruning will remain in the same shape. The smaller new growth will be removed, but larger limbs will not be removed in most cases. Those trees which were previously topped will be topped again. So we will not be turning V-shaped trees into tops trees. They will be removing dead wood from the trees. And if insect damage or other circumstances are found that would suggest that a tree be removed, the village will be contacted and approval will be sought before they proceed to remove that particular tree. The plan will be to coordinate this with our Superintendent of Public Works, our Tree Commission, and I would offer the Village Board if necessary. Central Hudson has pledged to work with us over the next four years until the next scheduled line clearing as our tree plan develops. I know there was some concern that we won't see them for four years again. But they have, like I said, pledged to work with us throughout the process and not only see us on a four-year basis. And that's consistent with the communication that's been in place between the Highway Department, the Tree Commission, and Central Hudson in years past. So from here, we have a letter from Meg Crawford, the Chair of the Tree Commission, that I think Howie's going to read for us and put into the record.
Yes, this is written on February 11th, 2016. Honorable Mayor, Village Board Members, and Concerned Residents. I write this letter from New Mexico to express my position on the consideration of village street trees which are under the utility lines. As a founding member and Chair of the Village Tree Commission, I advocate for the replacement of the original 114 trees which we listed and carefully reviewed together before I went on vacation. None of those trees are healthy or attractive. I understand you are only considering a small number of these tonight. I certainly hope the Village Board will vote for Central Hudson to remove all of them as this is at least a step in the right direction. Here is why I say this. It is the mission of the Village Tree Commission to protect, maintain, and improve our urban forests, including trees when they're in the right-of-way along streets and in public parks. The natural canopy beauty and health benefits they provide are of utmost concern. We must also ensure they do not become a hazard to public safety. The Tree Commission has already guided and planted more than 300 new trees with help of volunteers, the village, of the village, grants, the Friends of the Cemetery, and most recently, the Rotary Club at the Thompson-Mazarella Park. We hope to continue to plant twice a year in areas where there's a space for trees to reach their natural mature size. Where there are utility lines for close buildings, we should plant smaller ornamental or columnar species. We need to plant for diversity. So if one species, like the ash, elm, chestnut, or maple, is lost to disease, insects, or the stress of climate change, we will not lose the majority of our trees at once. Almost all the 114 trees that were on the list for removal by Central Hudson are Norway maples. These trees were planted widely in the medians in the village of Rhinebeck over 40 years ago and make up close to half of our street tree inventory, which is dangerously high for a single species. Norway maples should never have been planted under utility lines because they grow too large. They have a shallow and extensive root system which has lifted our sidewalks and gotten into our drainage. Their enormous seed production has put this tree on a state invasive species list. To address these problems, Central Hudson has had to prune them drastically. The village and property owners have needed to replace sidewalks and clear drain pipes. These Norway maples are injured, crippled, precariously destabilized, and sometimes killed in the process. These are the trees Central Hudson has offered to remove at a very modest price rather than prune every four years during their regular line clearing. These are the trees the Tree Commission would like to replace with more beautiful trees that would be cited so they can reach maturity without pruning or adversely affecting our infrastructure. We all need to consider that Rhinebeck has many trees reaching the end of their lifespan that have died back or have outgrown the space where they were planted and are too close to buildings. Many of the trees in need of pruning or removal are not under wires. Therefore, they were not considered by Central Hudson and not on their list. But they will be dealt with by the village within the next few years. We are spending thousands of dollars for tree pruning and removal yearly. Central Hudson is offering removal services at about 1/10th of our typical cost per tree. Let's be smart about it. I hope Central Hudson will continue to be willing to help us with the removal of hazardous trees moving forward so we can spend our tree budget on replanting and tree care rather than removals. I hope some of you that are in the audience and care so much about a beautiful and healthy Rhinebeck, largely due to our urban trees, will help the Tree Commission in its regular plantings. Please even consider becoming a member of the Commission. We need you. Sincerely, Meg Crawford. We have one opening on the Commission. So that's from Meg Crawford, our Chairwoman of the Tree Commission.
Anybody else, you guys got anything you want to show them? Howie, you got anything else, Gary? Okay. How about Tree Commission? Any guys want to say anything? Or reserve your comments for later? What's that?
I agree with Meg, anyway.
Okay. So we'll open up the floor to public comment. We don't have our microphone tonight, but Panda has a different camera setup. They have a...
Shotgun.
Shotgun microphone. So when it's your turn, please come up to the same location, identify yourself, tell us who you are, where you live, and then you'll be given three minutes to direct your comments specific to this tree conversation to the Board. So there should not be any, you know, bantering, quarreling among the audience. We got a list here, people that signed in. There seems to be at least 10 openings between the number eight and number 13, 14. We're going to start with Isabella Schulte. Come on up. And Panda will be keeping a clock, so she'll give you the nod and the countdown.
My name is Isabella Schulte. I live a couple blocks down the street, 104 East Market Street. And there are three of the silver trees in my sidewalk and three to the east of me. I heartily agree with Meg Crawford, but I don't think that removing the trees is actually our issue. Unfortunately, three minutes doesn't give me time to present what I do think the issue is. But so I only have time to say the trees in my sidewalk were planted by people who clearly did not understand the consequences of their action. In fact, my neighbor to my east, Jerry Traver, and I petitioned the Tree Commission several years ago for removal of trees, and the Tree Commission did their very best, but they didn't have the funds to do everything that we wanted and they wanted us to do. And now we do have this opportunity. Everything that Meg says I experienced on my house, I do wish we would focus on tree replacement. And I have 10 minutes worth of discussion on that. So I guess my speech is simply to say that, yes, the 114, I'm sure. Certainly the six that have been identified on my two blocks should be removed. But the real question is what will replace them and who is authorized to replace them?
Thank you. I would suggest if you have ideas about the replacement plan, not going to force you under the Tree Commission, but you feel free to submit a letter to the Village Board or to the Tree Commission, you know, so something they can, you know, kind of compile the ideas and work with.
My name is Cecily Fraser. I live on Sunset Road in the village, and I'm a former member of the Tree Commission. I'm sorry, Mayor, that you and perhaps others felt insulted by my letter. I didn't intend to be insulting. What I did intend to say is that it's not a model of good government, in my estimation, to have people who don't know much about trees going out to review the trees and make decisions about them. I think you should ask the Tree Commission if you want, you know, to cut down 25 trees or a third of the number, or a quarter of the number, whatever number you prefer. Then you say to people who really know, which trees are the worst trees? We want to take out the worst trees. And then perhaps rate the rest of her, you know, how bad they are and what kind of lifespan you could estimate might occur. I am concerned about the cost. It's not clear to me that property owners know that they will eventually have to take down these trees themselves if Central Hudson won't continue to put that money out, the $60. And the cost that's been cited is the cost of the village. When you, you know, go out to bid on a bunch of trees, you get a really good cost. However, as an individual with one, or two, or three trees, you're not going to get that deal. And so it's going to cost you, at the very least, $1,500. And for a tree that's heavily involved in the wires, $5,000. So that could be $15,000 or even $20,000 worth of tree removal that falls on the individual homeowner. And I just don't think that is a good idea. Perhaps, and I'm hopeful that you can, make a deal with Central Hudson and get them to, you know, pay for it into the future. And that's my primary concern right now.
Thanks, Cecily. I don't know that any of the trees on the list, Howie would probably know this, if we've had requests from individual homeowners to remove any of those trees. I don't think so. There was one on North Parsonage, but I don't even think that's on the list. Okay. So we haven't had a lot of crossover between trees that homeowners have requested permission from the, or recommendation from the Tree Commission to take down that are on the list. So I don't know that, you know, that opportunity exists for the homeowner to kind of latch on to the cost savings now. There are a number of trees that were on the list that we determined were outside of the right-of-way and that we didn't necessarily have the authority to approve the takedowns on, particularly on South Parsonage Street. Those all were outside of, identified by Central Hudson, but outside of the right-of-way.
I didn't realize there should be a time limit, so I only wrote a 22-page letter. Just kidding, there's only four pages here. And it would probably take me more than... Do you allow three minutes to read it? So I'm not going to, I just want to highlight some bullet points here. First off, Mayor Torrell of the Village Board, thank you for the opportunity to be here so that this community will share their thoughts with you. I want to do a little time travel and take everyone back. Some in this room may remember this, some of you may not. You may not have lived here, that's okay. We're all residents, we all have a part in this process. Imagine you were in Rhinebeck in the years 1971, okay? Now just pretend that there's no vehicle traffic in the village and you're standing directly underneath the red light. Okay, everybody with me? You look north, you look south, you look to the east, and you look to the west. And in the business district, all you see is parking meters and cars. No trees, okay? Within two years, that whole picture changed. The business community came together, the Village Board partnered with them, parking meters were removed, the trees were planted, those honey locusts that exist now, and the municipal parking lot property was bought and a service station was removed and the municipal parking lot was built. That was 1973. Here we are 45 years later, and we're talking about removing trees from the village of Rhinebeck. Okay? I'm going to highlight a few things here. I used to work for Chuck LaForge. Chuck was the longest-standing owner of the Beekman Arms. I remember his retirement party, how he was so thankful. The last thing he said was that the village had planted these trees in the village and made it look the way it did. It certainly changed the landscape. I've traveled throughout 45 states in the United States of America and you'll be hard-pressed to find another place if beautiful is this place we live in. You all know that, okay? The Village Board is now charged with doing that. I served seven years at that table, six years in the seat that he's in, all right? My whole thing was bring people together and solve problems. And that's what they're trying to do here now. While I was the mayor, we took two major steps to protect the character of this community. And that was the historic preservation law, which prevented people from tearing down historic buildings. And we passed a tree law to preserve the trees that are in this village. So when we talk about removing them, do we want to do a mass cutting? If we take 114 trees, or 127 trees, whatever the final number is down it, we will dramatically impact the character of this community. It's my belief we need a phased implementation plan here. Take down the ones that are the worst ones that are a threat to life and property. Replace those, move on to the next patch. So thought-out process. I have all respect in the world for the Tree Commission. I was a mayor when they were appointed. They do fantastic work. But I don't believe removing 120-some trees out of this village is of interest to this community. I have a background in agriculture and horticulture, so I know a little bit about trees. And there are some trees that aren't identified that are a problem. And I'm certainly willing to let people know what they are if they're interested. Regarding Central Hudson's plan, I say pop and cock, all right? Dare the bully. Mayor Torrell, with all due respect, last week you said, "We're not going to enter into a slugfest, but sometimes you got to punch the bully in the nose." So stand up to Central Hudson. Stand up to Central Hudson. Stand up to the PSC. We don't need dramatic pruning of these trees any more than we have in the past. Let's preserve them.
Thanks, Jim. Kathy Golden.
I really didn't plan on going in, Mayor, really. I just want to thank you for all the work you've been doing. I want to give a shout out to the Tree Commission and all the work they've done. I, too, was shocked when I first heard about the trees. I've had to make my own decisions on my own path, property, take down and planting. When I look at the trees, I guess I have to come out supporting the Tree Commission and Meg. The trees are in terrible shape. I know it would be dramatic change. It's kind of like tough love. But whatever, we need a plan for replanting. I know last fall I took down a beloved tree. It was very hard. But the landscaper said to me, "Look at it as a planting opportunity." So as Isabel said, we really need to start putting our energy into thinking about the replacements for these trees, which are problematic. I think we all agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sam Reifler. I live on Montgomery Street. One question. The last meeting, we talked about, it was 19 or 21 trees that you went out and you looked. So is that the number we're talking about now? Are we back to the Tree Commission's 114, or 120, or 170?
We're at the red dot trees right now, which are, there's 21 trees. And I believe we're prepared to remove one from that list in preliminary discussions prior to this meeting. So the number I believe that we're looking at now is 20.
I was just being with that low number.
Right. And those are, you know, arguably the worst of the trees, so.
My concern is with the pruning. In the statement that Central Hudson gave to you, they said they were going to do whatever, something similar to what they did four years ago. But I have heard bandied about a huge rectangle, something like 15 or 20 or something, which has, Homeland Security or the PSC has said that this is now the template. And I was wondering, that will be a much greater pruning than the pruning that Central Hudson did four years ago. Now, can you guys tell me anything about that? In other words, are we, are they going to stick to the way they pruned it four years ago? Are they going to cut out this huge rectangle that evidently is, Homeland Security says has to be cut out? Do you know anything about that?
The simple answer is that the current standard, the industry-accepted standard, was put in place in 2007. I think I have the years correct. So the way it works is that each utility company takes a proposal to the PSC and they say, "Here's the industry standard that we want to work with. This is what we're planning to do in our coverage area." And then the PSC either approves or disapproves that proposal, and that's what they work off of. So the change occurred in 2007, and we had one clearing, I believe in 2011, under the current standards. And according to Central Hudson, what they've told us on multiple occasions is that they did not necessarily cut to that standard in 2011.
That's right.
And the current standard is 10 feet on either side, 10 feet below, and 15 feet above.
So that will basically destroy, probably kill, an old tree.
And the statement that I, you know, relayed earlier is that Central Hudson told us that they will do very much what they did last time in 2011. In 90 to 95% of the cases, they will cut to the same standard they did before. They won't be changing the V. So if the V is seven feet outside the wire, they're not going to cut off that branch because it's within the 10 feet. They have discretion. Yeah, they don't take a metal box up there and cut all around it. It's kind of, they do the best they can with the help of the tree to preserve their, and secure their route of power. So they're not going to be up there with tape measures to determine where it goes. But if you have a tree that's in a major V already, they're not going to be cutting that off and making, cutting the top off that tree.
We do realize that this is not the same Central Hudson that cut the trees four years ago. This is now like a multinational company. Is anyone, we, Central Hudson came on our property. We had some trees that were near some power lines and this was a stream, blah, blah. And we cut a few branches, so I'm walking around with them. They showed me what they were going to cut. It wasn't Central Hudson, incidentally. It was Nelson, and they're going to be doing the work, not Central Hudson. And they were very nice guys, but it turned out that they cut a lot more than they said they were going to cut. Nothing disastrous, but they said one thing and didn't know. Now, is anybody going to be out there with Nelson while they do this? Someone from the Tree Commission? Or even someone maybe that the town or the Tree Commission could hire? It'd be worth the money to be there and watch them while they do it. Central Hudson isn't even going to be there. It's just this company, Nelson. And Time, okay? But that's my suggestion, that we have somebody keep an eye on them and make sure that they do what they said in that letter to you. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's an excellent suggestion.
Thank you. I'm Gina Fox. I live at Nine Men Road in Rhinebeck. And thank you, Mayor, for having this. And I commend the audience for being here tonight. After serving on the town board, it's so great having a full house. It's really refreshing and it's important. I come from two sides of this. About 15 years ago, I was driving down South Street with a newborn and two of my children in the car, and I heard this huge noise. And it was a clear day. I didn't know what was happening. And a huge half of a tree fell right in front of my car, and it landed about a foot as I stopped. And it definitely would have killed all of us. It took out all the power lines on both sides of South Street, and it covered the whole street. I had to back up and come down Route 9, too. And it was so terrifying. So, and I've also planted 15 trees with Meg, and I've been a recipient of the Tree Commission's great work. great work at my own house. And I value the work that you do tremendously, and I think it's really important. But I also know that our trees need work, and there are some that are beyond their lifespan. I also know how important it is to use the financial incentive of taking down the ones that do need to be taken down at $60 as opposed to $1,500. That's extremely important, and we would be foolish not to do that. The only other thing that I think is important to look at is the possible burying of the power lines. And Scott, your letter was quite, quite good in that, and I appreciated that very much. But we actually have had a committee that Gary Kenton started over about a year ago that we've been looking into burying the power lines, maybe in conjunction with the new water mains on the main streets, Route 9 and Montgomery and Market. It's going to be expensive and it's problematic, but it's not impossible. And we actually met with Central Hudson, and we have a dialogue going about that. And I think that we have been working on it for a while. So if you do want to make that into a legitimate committee or something that is recognized, you already have a lot of groundwork there that's there, and I'm happy to help. After Gary left, Gentry Rouse is our new committee chair. And so, that's all I have to offer, but thank you for the opportunity to make it happen.
Thanks, Gina. On the power lines, we did at our last meeting approve the creation of a formal underground utility line committee. And Gentry has agreed to get it started, and he was going to reach out to everybody that previously served on that committee, which kind of went dormant when Gary Kenton left. So I think if you haven't heard from him already, I'm sure he's going to reach out to you and the others that were on that committee to get it started again. And now is, you know, is an official committee that will report here and has the support of the board.
Great.
Yep. John Clark.
I'm on Beach Street, also on the village planning board. I'm speaking myself. I've put together a one-page argument in favor of keeping the street trees. I'll just go over quickly. One is that these trees have been around for a long time, much longer than 1970s. And I have a postcard picture showing the village in 1907 with a full canopy of trees before the power lines. So this is really a defining characteristic of our historic district. It should be treated as such. Just as we protect buildings, we should protect trees. And studies have shown that trees are incredibly valuable, well beyond their sort of aesthetic value and even historic value. They add $13,000 to the average cost of value of a property. They upgrade the retail sales in a village with street trees by something like 9%. A lower temperature, significantly in saving heating bills, saving on repaving costs because shaded streets don't even be paved as often as unchated streets. And most importantly, I think, they reduce traffic speeds when you have trees canaping over the streets by 5 to 15 degrees, miles per hour. That's, you know, same can save lives. And it certainly makes our village a more pedestrian-friendly place when cars are going slowly. And you can see cars coming around that corner by the hospital, and they slow down when they hit the parked cars in the street trees. That's what slows cars down, that sort of conflict. So I offered, and I have great respect for the Tree Committee's knowledge and their good intentions, but what's best individually for the health of a tree is not always best for what's the health of a village. You have to see the tree in the context of the street. And it has values way beyond whether the tree is ultimately mature and healthy and spreading and glorious. The canopy means a lot, even if the trees are forced in odd positions because of the power lines. Small trees and trees set back too far from the street do not have the same economic value or environmental value as street trees set close to the street. So I offered three alternatives to the 114 tree scenario. One was the way it's been approached by the village board, selectively pick out the worst trees, the ones that are dying or severely damaged. And then phase-in approach where you plant trees in anticipation of having the next tree having to come down later. So then you have a tree replacement growing before you have to cut the next tree down next door. That's great. There's two other options I have. What? 10 seconds. I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. Can I have an opportunity to speak at the end if I'm still around?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim. Keep going, keep going.
The second is, they can raise the power lines. If you look at the village center, where they're not cutting down trees, the power lines are 10 feet or so taller than the tree, and the power lines out at the ends of the village where they do want to cut down trees. They have old poles out there. They put brand-new poles, which are 10 feet higher. That allows them to move the power lines up and leave the trees alone, or at least trim them in a more mature way. So, for instance, in Montgomery Street and East Market Street, where we have these whole rows that they want to take down, you would have to replace half as many power lines and raise the wires up as you would have to take trees down. So, Central Hudson really has an alternative here to save their power lines and leave our trees in their best character. And then they also have the option of moving trees across the street in certain locations. On Montgomery Street in particular, the trees on the west side are almost nonexistent. There's only four trees on the west side, or the east side of Montgomery Street. And there's 24 trees they want to take down on the east side. So if they consolidate the wires, there's wires on both sides now. They consolidate the wires on the east side, raise them up high. They only have to treat four trees, and they can leave the 24 in to grow back. Finally, I wanted to make a suggestion. I made the suggestion before, in context, I was on the sidewalk task force. When you have a tree committee, and then a separate power line committee, and then some other committee, they don't work together, and you don't get the full picture of what's beneath the street. So what I'm suggesting is you put together a streetscape committee that has tree representatives, has sidewalk representatives, advocates, and have underground power subcommittee, that they work on parking benches, street trees, and sidewalks, so that you can get a balanced view of what's good for the village, rather than only giving the perspective of what's good for the tree.
Thank you.
Can I just say something, gentlemen? I know you retired, well, it was the last month, and you said you're looking for things to do. Streetscapes committee. There you go. You're the chairman.
Hi, my name is Frank Mezzarella. I grew up in Rhinebeck in year one and year two, when I was two. And first of all, just thanks to the board for your work and all the volunteers on the committee, which have done so much work. I really appreciate it. So a few issues. I guess first off, I wanted to ask if there are some kind of graphics which would help people understand better the exact location of the trees, whether it be an aerial photograph or site plan? So, we see these numbers on the trees. Does that exist, or have I missed that?
Right now, there's, just by a street, by each street, there tells you where the numbers are. We do have a map that, I don't know if it has the trees that are, the 20 trees designated on it right now?
Head down.
Okay, I got the head down. No, it's not, doesn't make just those 20 trees on there. It has the 114 trees on it right now.
And has that been made public? Is it, or is it...
I don't believe so. Not intentionally that we're keeping it under wraps, it's just, there's only one copy, and it's a working copy that the Tree Commission has.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if it was a PDF or something, which was projected on the screen that we can all see in the audience. The numbers are a little bit abstract. I think it's hard for some of us to get a grip on that. But I think on the other hand, I agree a lot with what some of the ideas that John Clark mentioned. I'm an architect, so naturally I have a great appreciation for the preservation of architecture and buildings, but just as much for the space that occurs between those buildings and the landscape. It's just as important, especially here in the U.S. I think that street tree is one of the great American inventions. With all you know historically, that idea to put a tree or put the garden facing the road becomes a public space, and the yards and all that, how that contributes to making a semi-public space is really, it was invented here in the United States with the early settlers. It was later adopted in the garden city movement and abroad. So that's something that is very unique to, not only to Rhinebeck, but also to the U.S. So, another question was, the 21 trees that you plan on removing this year, is there a plan? When are we going to find that in another year, two years, or four years of the cycle, whatever the cycle is, that another 25 are going to be planned to be removed, so that over maybe a 10-year period, we'll see these 100 trees disappear? Or is there some kind of long-term plan?
I don't think we have a plan beyond the current ones as we continue to assess the health and position of the trees that remain. So there may be, you know, more sooner than four years, there may be, it may be longer than four years. But the goal is to work with the Tree Commission to give us kind of a, you know, obviously they came to us with the plan to remove all 114 now, and they're developing a replacement plan based on that. So now, we've gone back to them and are asking them for a phased plan for replacement, and, you know, we kind of prioritize which ones would need to be removed next.
And is that something that would happen annually, or there's no...
I think it would be, they need to establish a baseline now based on, you know, we remove these 20. What is the plan to replace those? Which trees, which species are going to go where based on the removal? Because it won't be, there won't be a one-for-one. Some places, it's already overcrowded, so there may not need to be a tree in some of those locations. Maybe there'll need to be two in another location. But the idea is to have them bring us a, you know, a phased plan.
Okay. And another question was the new trees. Is there any information as to the species, the caliber of those trees, and their location? Meaning, whether they are being relocated in each spot for, to avoid these problems in the future? Like further back from the streets, so that they avoid, or is that going to create problems with the sidewalks? Is there any kind of strategy as to where they will be located so that in the future this problem does not occur?
We're trying to, each tree is individual. Each spot's individual. You have to look at each spot. Sometimes there's no place to put the tree except between the sidewalk and the road, because maybe there's a building right there. So a small tree would have to go there, which won't grow above the power lines. Now, where there's spaces within the right-of-way, past the sidewalk, we would plant trees there that would be able to grow taller.
Is there a specific species?
There is. The Tree Commission develops a very specific list of trees that will go, I think, I saw it, it's like, there's eight trees, eight different species that work in very specific locations, whether it's a low-line wire, or whether it's a tight space in between the sidewalk and the road. But there is a list of trees that are not of the same ilk as the Norway maples. So they will grow lower, or they'll grow with a lower, or less roots. There's also soils that we're specifying underneath sidewalks that allow for the movement of the roots, so they're not eating sidewalks. It's a Cornell-developed soil that allows for some movement. So there are some very specific items that we adhere to when we're replacing trees.
But I think to go to the thrust of what your comments and questions are reaching towards is the fact that we don't have a comprehensive phased plan as of now. And I think that's one of the real reasons why we personally wanted to approach this with a little bit of caution, because it's one thing to take advantage of, you know, an attractive price to take down trees, but if we don't really have a plan as to how we're going to go about replacing and replanting the trees, and to take into account a lot of the considerations that you're raising, then the decision in haste would only harm our village. So I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Let me just say that Central Hudson came to us with this plan the first week in January. So that's why we don't have a plan for replacing all these 114 trees. So this is new to us, too. This is not something that we dreamt up, you know, and...
Yeah, there's another comment I want to make. I don't know if the tree cutting that we've been saying is attributed to only Central Hudson, or there have been several causes which are changing kind of drastically the landscape of Rhinebeck. But you see it along Montgomery Street as you head towards River, the silver, Mount Leeson Road, a lot of old trees and properties where I used to live. Beautiful, big trees. Some of those are really what makes the property, makes the yard. The hospital has developed some of their land there, not only putting driveways in between all of the buildings on Montgomery Street, but they're taking down trees. We're seeing in other areas of Montgomery Street and elsewhere. So I think it's just combined a lot of different factors, perhaps having a great impact on our landscape than a lot of us...
Well, when somebody comes to the Tree Commission to take a tree down, it's because it's unsafe. It's not because they don't like the big tree there. It's because it's an unsafe situation.
Yeah. I have a...
What's that? I'm not talking about the hospital. Talk about when people come to the Tree Commission to ask us to take trees down, to consider...
We have a few coordinations placed.
It's usually an unsafe situation.
So like a lot of people here, I've seen the landscape change a lot, since I remember one of those trees were planted on Market Street and how they eventually grew it. I can remember one that was an SO station there on the corner. I can ride my bike around that. The other question was, is there is a number, or is there more specific concrete data as to the cost of implications of burying the lines underground? What it would cost per foot, foot per yard, or whatever.
I've heard 10,000. It's wrong.
That's wrong?
Yeah. It's between $650 and $1,000 per foot. And so, $650 is more in line with when you're doing other utility work. So since we're about to embark on a capital improvement plan on our water system, we looked into doing that. And, you know, it's a conversation that we will have going forward about that. Those lines run from the hospital down into Market Street, and then all of Livingston, Platte, and Chestnut. So it's in the back of our minds that that plan is developing as far as the water system is concerned, so partnering that with American Utilities.
It's kind of a daunting number, then.
Yeah. But you know, that's just a standalone number with no real buy-in from any utility. So that's something to work off of.
And is there, I'm sure there are other concerns as well besides the cost, because when you have that work being done on Route 9, a major corridor, would that reduce the traffic to one lane? Is that going to bring with it a whole series of other issues that...
Well, regardless of whether it's just a water line or it's the electric line, it's all going to be an issue of which we're going to have to do some sort of traffic guiding, for sure. But no, it's certainly somewhere looking...
Okay, thank you.
And we're looking for the, this committee that is going to be starting up to give us some of those answers.
I created Livingston Street. Again, my thanks to the board and the Tree Commission for the interchange that's arrived at this point. As I understand it, there are 21 trees that will come down, and the pruning spec is going to be close to, in an informal agreement with Central Hudson, to the 2011 pruning. Is that where we stand?
That's correct.
Just a couple other points. I think it would be good if there was some way to monitor the pruning, if it's going to be an informal gentleman's agreement, because I think those are third-party companies and...
and not directly under the management control of Central Hudson. I think the idea of moving the trees to, or moving the power lines that John Clark mentioned is an interesting idea to the east side of the market, maybe preserving some of those other trees for a longer period of time. And just lastly, as you and the Tree Commission go forward, just a reminder that about 30% of the village is over the age of 60. And if you do dramatic changes to remove the tree canopy in the trees there, many of us, myself included, who would not be around to enjoy those trees that arrived 20 or 30 years ago. So I think that's an important part of the post.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I think our goal is to save as many as we can for as long as we can. So hopefully, hopefully the canopy is there for you. We have other people who'd like to make comments. Come on, if we got...
Can we ask a question?
What's that?
Can we ask a question?
Sure, this is a question-answer session. So come on, bud, when you come up, sign in there for us. Pat, do you have another sheet? So I'll take, we'll take that one back and we can start a new one.
My name is Keith Cranny, and I live at the end of the village, just down near Hogs Bridge, right across the connection from San. I was talking about Central Hudson and how they came clinging along Rhine, I think it's called the Rhinkell, that runs through the, through the bridge there, Hogs Bridge. And one thing I noticed about Central Hudson is they seem to come into Rhinebeck as well as other places. If you take a look up Route 9 and three of Going Up to Go 8 and 199, they're in the process of land stripping, taking everything down, without any kind of approvals. They just go and cut. And along the stream there, a few years back, everybody got a notice who lived in that area, that they were going to come in and spray it into wetlands. Now, I can't build or move anything within 100 feet of the wetlands, but Central Hudson has a right to come in and spray chemicals in that area. I called the DEC and they said they can't do anything about it. I think the village should start talking to Central Hudson about where they're going to place these poles. The hospital went in, they just come in, they don't ask any approval, I don't believe. And they put a few extra poles in because of the power the hospital needs. And they replace other, they just come in and put poles in. They crisscross the roads back and forth, so it doesn't make any sense. It's not, it's not a nice grid. They do what they want to do. And I think it's important for the village and the town to get together and start instructing Central Hudson a little bit, or even go to the governor or the state in New York and ask for certain privileges, because we are a historic area. And what they do, they should be monitored. And they should have to get approvals, just like we do, especially when it comes to trees and when it comes to spraying things with chemicals. Because they do that, you're not aware of it, but they do do that in and around the community without notifying, I don't believe they notify the village.
Well, the area you're talking about is in the town.
Well, no, it's on this side as well, in the village as well. That run runs right around towards the woods, and that's in the village, I believe. So yeah, it's bordered, it gets into the stream, and it kills frogs, and it does a lot of other things that do. And I think they should be addressed, that should be addressed. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tammy Valentino. I live on the corner of Route 9, Montgomery Street, and West Chestnut. I'm losing two trees, but that's okay. And I want to say thank you so much for traipsing around the village and looking at the trees and deciding that we shouldn't have cut down 120-some. Thank you so much. I want to say that I've talked to a fellow from the Tree Commission, and he said that they're not planning on planting trees in the median, but from what I've heard tonight, you are going to plant some trees in the median strips. And I want to say that myself and my friend Mark Lidle are going to spearhead a fundraising campaign to help raise money for the Tree Commission, for the village. I just want to know who we get people to make the checks out to, and that will help. That'll also help with paying for the stump removal extra time, because each, how much time does it take to remove a stump? Who's going to, you know, who's going to do that? It's a big job, right?
The Village Highway Department's going to remove the stumps. We have the stump for it.
Right, but...
I don't know how long it takes to do each one.
I know, but, so at any rate, I'd love to do that, and Mark has agreed, because he's such a great guy, and just let me know.
Okay.
Okay.
Really appreciate it.
I already have about 20 people who've committed money, and I know that there'll be just about anyone that you talk to.
Well...
I imagine, how many of you in here would donate a little money for Park? It's Plant a Rhinebeck Tree. Right, Mark?
Excellent.
Thanks.
Thanks. I just want to answer the question. We can accept donations that will be earmarked for the project, they'll set up a separate account. We have, you know, every now and then, money does come into the village and sometimes sits for periods of time, but that will be not included in the general fund, but earmarked for trees, and it can only be accessed for that.
What should the check say?
It would be Village Rhinebeck, and then you would put a note, you know, for the trees, or whatever that organization...
Park.
Yeah.
Plant a Rhinebeck Tree. Okay?
There you go. Yep. Christian?
My name is Christian Feketier. I live on Livingston Street. I moved here 20 years ago. I was then living in Paris, and my wife called me and said, you know, I think we found a really nice little house, you should come up and look at it. It was on Livingston Street, right by a terrapin. That was 20 years ago. And I came, and it was like, I think it was the Fourth of July, and we were standing at the corner of Parsonage and Livingston, and the kids were, you know, all the, you know, the chariots and the kids were playing violin behind the tractors. It was like, to me, it was incredible. So I decided to come here. And that day, the trees were absolutely beautiful, the canopies were absolutely gorgeous. And I moved down from Livingston Street all the way up to Parsonage and, you know, next to the Sussex. I've been living there for 20 years, for 20 years. You know, the trees have provided me with, you know, really a healthy lifestyle. So I just want us to be concerned about the trees and our environment. Central Hudson coming and telling us what to do, I think is unacceptable. I think we should work together. I'm willing to work with you guys to plan long-term. You know, I'm an architect, I can draw, I can draw maps, I can help out, you know, looking at things in the long-term, coordinate with the street, you know, utilities, digging and all this stuff. I think we need to take the time to think about all this. You know, across the street from me, there was like three trees that were blooming every year that was absolutely beautiful in the spring. They were cut down by the person who bought the house. They were never replaced, and it was absolutely gorgeous. Now, at the time, the reason that that person gave us was, she came to the village, and the village told her, yeah, you can take them down, because they're not the trees that are supposed to be planted in the village. Now, they were not maples, they were like smaller trees, I'm not sure exactly what they were, but they were absolutely, they were just beautiful. Now, you know, it takes a long time for a tree to grow. If you take them down, you end up with a hole, and it's ugly as hell. At least, this village is actually beautiful, and I want us to preserve it. I think it's emotional for me, and I think it's emotional for a lot of people. It's a, it's a living organism. What Central Hudson does, cut the trees for lines, ridiculous. We have to find a different way to deal with that than to say, okay, as a technocrat, we can do this, because we have the, you know, the right to do this, but we can't do this, because Central Hudson has the right to come in. No, we can't. We have to stand up and say no. You know, as a village, we should be able to do that, right? That's my feeling. I think it's our community, you know, we have families here, we have roots, and we have to stand up. So if you need help, I'm here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dorothy Crane. I live on Livingston Street. I just have a question. There's a rumor that I've heard that as the Tree Commission looks ahead and planting new trees, that no more trees will be planted on the strip between the sidewalk and the street because of the wires issue. And that instead, they'll be planted in people's yards. Is that, is that true?
Legally, we can't plant, use public money to plant on private property. So we try to stay within the right-of-way, maybe, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong. So some of the trees that are going to be planted in the median will be small trees, like a pear tree.
The 20-foot high ones.
Yeah, they won't grow into the wires.
No canopy, right?
Right. So we try to find an area within the right-of-way, past the sidewalk, where we can put bigger trees. Now, this private donations, I'm just thinking, maybe we can keep them separate, so we can plant trees on private property, which will have a bigger canopy, bigger trees.
But that depends on the homeowner wanting the tree on their property.
Right. These are all the things that we deal with with the Tree Commission. Sometimes people don't want trees.
Sometimes people take down really beautiful trees.
Right. Well, sometimes when we cut down a dead tree because of safety, and people don't want another tree there. So it's not automatic that people are going to want a tree.
So the maintaining of a canopy is complicated.
Yes. Yes. The perfect spot is between the sidewalk and the road, but...
Yeah, so it's not as easy to...
It's not good for the sidewalks.
To keep that going, yes.
Right. It's not good for the wires. We should just bury the wires, that's the end of the story.
Yeah.
My name's Andrew Delmanko. I provide my time between Rhinebeck and New York. This is my first visit to such a meeting, and I'd like to say, first of all, I'm tremendously impressed by the civility of this course and the intelligence of the comments. I wish the rest of the country what we're doing here tonight. I'll be very grateful. I just really want to make one point, but proceed that by saying again, I have great personal respect for Meg Crawford. She knows infinitely more about trees than I do. But I do, and many good points have been made here tonight, I do hear one theme that I would like to emphasize and underscore. I heard it from Keith, I've heard it from Christian and a number of others, and that is the question of trust with regard to Central Hudson, and how much leeway we should be allowing them in decision-making and in implementing whatever policy we articulate about how to handle our trees. And I will confess that I have a prejudice in this matter, because I had an experience with Central Hudson quite a number of years ago, when I didn't live in the village, but lived at a house in the town, where a Central Hudson power line, because of the span, was creating structural damage to my house. And an independent engineer was brought in, it was very clear what was happening, and the company simply refused to acknowledge responsibility for what was happening until by chance I was able to bring in an engineer friend who had a long list of military decorations and a lot of good experience, and when he indicated that he believed that they were causing a problem, then they backed off and fixed it. So I'm not generalizing from that. They may be a good company, I think they provide reliable power for all of us in this room. I simply want to underscore what I've heard from others. I don't think we should allow Central Hudson to make these decisions for us, how much to prune, which trees to take down. I think we should be more proactive, and we should monitor their activity to preserve the beauty of the village that we've been talking about tonight. Thank you.
Here next, Tom.
I'm Joanna Underwood, and I've lived in Zitfeldberg Road for 34 years, back and forth in New York City, and I've never been to one of these meetings either. But having been up here for the last two weeks, I heard it was taking place, and Dodd gave me information on it, and I too am very impressed by the discussion that's going on. I wanted to ask you a question. Going down Slate Quarry Road, there was a long, long strip of beautiful old trees, all cut down. They just went in front of the house, the house on that street that burned down, a very old house, and they built some kind of a barn there. All the trees were cut down in front of it, and even driving down there, you feel the difference. It doesn't feel good. It's ugly. They cut down tree after tree after tree. Was that Central Hudson? Who authorized that? And is that part of the same process that we're talking about here, where Central Hudson came in, made a proposal, and somebody said at this downward, yes?
I don't think so. I mean, I'm not 100% sure, but I think that had a lot to do with the realignment. There's a lot of work going on, going on on Slate Quarry Road, and there was clearance issues, and if you notice, there's a flashing yellow light now, a hazard light there, and a couple of other things.
Guardrail.
Guardrail. I think it has to do with the safety of that road. There's been a lot of attention paid to that road. I know that there's been lots of forums over at the town hall. That's a town, that's the town out that way. But yeah, a lot of forums to do with the unsafeness of that road. So I think it has to do with that. I'm not 100% sure, because it happened a while ago that that clearing took place, and they put in some taller poles. At least, not a while ago, but longer than five or six weeks ago.
And one question I had about the plan you're coming up with now, if the town's going to be here for a long time, I think Market Street is sort of the heart of the town. One of the things in fighting so hard, which I was here to do, to keep it a walkable town, so that it was really lovely to walk around in, that's one of the central features of it. And I think the way it's been built has been really sensitive to it being a walkable town. And the main street, the whole question of the cost of burying the lines on Market Street, I would just like to vote at least for serious consideration of that, because this is a stunning town. There aren't so many as beautiful and as old. And it makes a big difference, and it's going to be around here a long time. So I don't know what it would take, but as opposed to cutting the trees down, I see what the roots are doing to the sidewalks, but something that's thought about in a very long term, about the livability and the history and the future of this town, it would be a wonderful thing.
Thank you.
I'm Eric Roma, lives just outside the village on Route 308, and have a couple questions. Why is, when I first heard about the deal that Central Hudson was offering, my immediate response was, it sounded like blackmail. When they say, we're going to either kill your trees or prune them so badly that you're going to want them cut down, and then we'll only charge you $60 to reclaim it, to take it down for you. Well, it shouldn't be their work to take it down in the first place, if they're destroying the trees, cutting them so badly that they're not even viable anymore. Then it's their problem that they should have been taken down. And the whole thing seemed to be predicated on this time thing, that we had to get this done now, because this is the deal on the table. Was any counteroffer made by the town? I mean, this is the business, they're in the process of making deals. I mean, I want to thank you guys first, that's what I meant to lead with. Thank you guys for doing a great job, and we really appreciate it, and all the people that brought, you know, this up to my attention. But I think we need to be, again, tougher with people like Central Hudson, and, you know, come back with a counteroffer and say, this is our deal. You know, do it, here's your opening offer, let's come back with an opening offer on our part, and, you know, really, really be proactive about this, and say, this is, you know, no, you know, how about you don't do any trimming? And, you know, and lead from there, and then, you know, you know, take some charge of the situation, so that Central Hudson isn't, you know, saying, this is the way we do it, and we're industry standards, and homeland security, and all this stuff. standards, and homeland security, and all this stuff. Anyway, that's all.
I think we tried to make a deal on that, because that's what you're saying, that they're going to come back next year?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're trying to make a deal on it. And they can trim whenever they want.
Can I just ask one question that came up after I had spoken? There was a letter that came out from Central Hudson saying that the tree commission came to them, and Howie, maybe you can speak to this, because you keep saying that Central Hudson came to us and said this. Which is it? Because they're saying the exact opposite. And I actually spoke to a guy there and...
Tree commission is here. They came to us through our first meeting in January. They came to Meg and said, we might have an offer for you. I don't want to paraphrase the words, whatever, but they came to us.
Of this year, January?
This year, January. Yeah, our first tree meeting of the year.
So they're wrong when they wrote that letter to the community forum?
I don't know what they wrote. What did it say?
They said that our tree commission came to them.
No, periodically, we go to Central Hudson. If a homeowner has a tree that they want cut down that's near power lines, we try to get Central Hudson to cut them down for free.
Right. Which is good.
Yeah. So maybe once a year, we do that. So they came to us this time and said, hey, we got this deal.
That would be helpful to clarify that, because...
Well, that's the way it is, and there's two people from the tree commission here, and you guys can back me up on that, right?
Good. I'm not questioning you. I'm questioning them. I think that's something in the public's mind that is helpful.
Now, when you were on the power line committee, did you guys come up with any type of number?
Yes.
Because like I was going to say before, it was 10,000 between poles, but it might be more than that, right, Scott?
Well, because 10,000 between poles doesn't include all the other infrastructure work from paving, or concrete sidewalks, or curbs, or any of that other stuff, so...
Exactly. So they gave us a high number like that, and then we're working on narrowing that down and finding out what exactly that entails, and what we can avoid, and what we couldn't avoid, so...
It's going to be different from situation to situation, from street to street.
Exactly.
But that's approximately the range that you have to deal with.
So that was all I wanted to add.
I have one further question. When they cut down a tree, you guys grind the stump, and then, I mean, in order to plant another tree there, you have to dig out that whole root ball and everything.
That's a much more expensive endeavor, so that's why most of the time, the stumps just get ground, because a lot of times, that whole root system's wrapped around some sort of utility, whether it's a drain line, or a water line, or any other thing that could be buried there.
So what happens to a new tree that's not possible to plant when that's...
Well, some do. We don't usually plant right on that same spot, because it's a soft area.
Chip it over.
Yeah, that's what we usually do.
I really, I'd really like to say that it's really impressive to sit down with the tree commission, and because they know every one of these trees, you know, by name.
By name, by number.
And by number now. And they have a, maybe there's not this master plan laid out on a piece of paper that lays, you know, in very graphic detail how it's laid out, but they have an idea of exactly what they need to do and where they need to do it. And, you know, it'd be nice as a group to have, I think, the tree commission, you know, come in and also present and tell us, based on these trees that we proposed, what their plan is, so that we can all see it and share that information, because they know it. They know where they would like to plant a tree, what type of tree they would like to plant, and present that vision that we could all share then when we do this.
Jim, and then Dodd.
I just wanted to respect your time before this. A lot of things I wanted to add, and Jim, with Chestnut Street. I had heard a comment in the media that Dodd had made about the frequency of power outages in the community. And I've been living where I am on Chestnut Street for about 26 years now, and I can count on less than two hands how many times the power has gone out. So I think it's a very valid point that we need to consider, when Central Hudson has all of these needs to do this trim, but now, according to what you're telling us tonight, it sounds like they backed off on what they're proposing. Well, I can remember when I was a mayor in 2011, we had two tropical storms within a week, and we had minimal power outages here in the village of Rhinebeck. So Scott's already said it. The solution here is get the power lines in the ground. Okay? We all know that, all right? Central Hudson has been trimming these trees in this village for years, all right? And it's like, I run into the same pothole and damage my car, and I do it year after year after year, and I expect a different result. So they say, we can't afford to do that. It's too expensive. It'll cost us a fortune. But they make a fortune. They're not willing to spend anything to help solve a problem. That is their problem to correct. I just don't understand the mentality. So I think it's up to you guys to really stand firm with these guys and say, hey, look, everybody should be a partner in this. The tree commission, the village board, PSC, Central Hudson, get everybody together and say, we're going to solve this problem. And that's what it takes. Everybody's got to be a willing participant. Nobody takes a hard line and says, let's fix the problem. We've got enough dysfunction in this country, and all but even in Washington. We don't need to hear of the village of Rhinebeck. Thank you.
Dodd?
Just a brief comment update. I have to check on this. I'm not sure it's true, but I believe your building department software has the ability to map the trees by GPS coordinate and then project them on a map, and you can put comments in as to species and age and condition. I'll check on that, let the tree commission and you guys know.
We have a tree inventory, and all that information is on inventory.
But it's on paper, or is it...
It's both digital and, I believe, digital.
But it's projectable onto a map now?
I assume so. It's digital.
It has to be converted to the, I believe, the way the village is set up, with the software they have, that they also have a GIS capability. So if your inventory were transferred so it was on the county maps, then it would be preserved forever and projectable on the map by species or in all locations, color code, a lot of different things you would be able to do with GIS. To respond to the gentleman's comment earlier, is there a map where you could see visually what's going on and what the impact would be if removed? But I'll check on it. I'm not 100% sure of that, but I believe it has the ability to inventory. The same way it can inventory storm brains, power lines, all that other stuff, it can inventory random objects, and then you can project it so people can see visually what you're talking about.
I believe it does have that capability, and I believe that it is not, our trees are not in that software. It's the municipality software, the newer, the newest version.
Yeah, but already, if you already know the locations, you know the GPS coordinates already.
I believe so, yeah.
So then, probably with a data conversion, it could be moved to...
I don't have the disk. Do you know how to do it? I know it existed at one time.
I don't know about Howie. Yeah, I've never seen it. All I've seen is the map. That inventory was done before I came on the board. That was about 10 years ago. Regardless, it needs to be put into the new municipality software.
The capabilities there to look at it in a more holistic way.
And for a long-term solution that gets beyond the tags and the red dots, and, yes, Jim, maybe Jim's got some...
You may want to check with Cornell Cooperative Extension, because I know when the tree study was done, and this whole mapping project was undertaken, Cornell Cooperative Extension was involved in some regard in that.
We'll take a look and see if we can bring it all, bring it all online with the new system.
I'd like to make a very small point, Rachel Favel. I've been on the zoning board for many years in the village, and we always consider the sort of incoherent costs of zoning, and what's lost and what's gained by people having to make sacrifices on the property. And it just occurs to me, in considering the cost about burying the power lines, we haven't heard from the merchants of the village, but I mean, if East Market Street starts looking like, you know, Malltown USA, and people stop shopping here, because what's the point? Why? We shop here because it's beautiful. That is why we shop here. And if people stop, you know, that's a huge, that's a huge loss to the village, which is hard to even quantify right now, but I think should be factored into the cost when weighing the cost-benefit analysis in terms of burying the power lines.
Yes, sir.
I'm Eric Meyer, I live at 21 South Street. And I'd like to really reinforce what John Clark said and what Jim Burton said. I thought those are really excellent remarks. If I were given 11-hour for one day to do damage to this town, I would cut the trees down. So I think that a lot of really interesting things were put forward here tonight, and I would suggest that maybe a hard schedule be put together about looking at these alternatives. So if, to my mind, the tree commission's plan is just one plan, and that should be presented in pretty detail, because if it's just a phasing of the damage, we get nothing out of that. Cutting off one finger every four years, it just, you know, spreads out the pain, and the result is the same. So if there's a phasing plan, it needs to take into account how long it takes these trees that we're going to replace the cuttings with, how long they take to get to maturity so that they restore what we already have, so we're not just stepping back, we're not just ruining what we've got, and, okay, there's a little two-inch caliber tree in its place, sort of in its place. I think the idea of buried service and/or raising the power lines, I think those are great ideas. What's the schedule for looking at all these alternatives in a really hard way, so that we can walk away at some point, be it the springtime, or whatever it is, with an actual plan that the community can support?
Streetscape Committee.
I know one thing is, for things to work, they have to have schedules. And I know, Scott, you know that. And I'm an architect, and I live and die by those things myself, so I would just ask if you, maybe the next, or suggest, the next thing be a schedule for, you know, putting these things actually together, not just, hey, there's an idea, there's another idea. Let's set some direction and move ahead.
Thank you.
I actually believe that we can raise enough money to buy trees that are a little more mature than what the tree commission has been planting, which would make, Dodd will be able to live long enough to see a tree. Very sick of her. They're supposed to leave for the trees. Right. Just get more people... T-shirt. Yeah, okay.
If you got a tree, well, all this, we're not moving it by hand.
Right.
So the cost probably quadruples per tree.
So what about getting someone that has a machine?
Central, you're up.
Oh, I just, I wanted to mention that the trees aren't bare root, and to be able to plant them like...
From going from this cost per tree...
He's saying that.
This cost per tree is the reality of that.
Right, okay.
So that's all. It's not impossible.
So that, that's all you want to talk about, is the cost of a bare root versus the larger...
Well, we can't really plant bigger trees, because we plant them, individuals plant them, and we have to be able to pick them up. So if they're bigger, then what they...
Well, you know, that's a constraint, a vegetarian constraint. We could get a machine and plant huge trees if we had the money.
Have the money.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, and they're going to raise a lot. They will vary the power lines with this contribution as well. Yes, sir.
But no matter what size, if we keep the power lines where they are, no matter what we replace these, we're going to be replacing these with smaller trees, is that correct? Because Central Hudson is going to put them in the shape of these were, and then 10, you know, 30 years down the road, people will be complaining that we didn't think about the right trees for this thing.
It depends where we can plant it.
So we're going to have to have smaller trees, and we're not going to have a canopy unless those power lines are either raised or...
Exactly.
Is that correct?
For the most part, or if we're able to plant them on the other side of the sidewalk and let them grow out and over.
I think we should aim for what we have. We can't aim for less. I mean, it's, you know, we have to find a way to make this work, and, you know, it's just like, you know, it's just the way it is.
I mean, you know... John?
I just want to reiterate one thing and say one thing I missed. Reiterating is, when you plant small trees, columnar trees, ornamental trees, whatever you want to call them, that exist below power lines, you do not get the same effect. You are still ruining the effect of that overarching canopy that slows down traffic, that helps the value of houses, that helps the value of the street. I come at it from an urban design perspective, and that, the idea of creating complete diversity in the village, so that you don't have that sort of uniform row of street trees as you come down the street, ruins the whole effect. So you have to be careful about that. I understand the need to create diversity. I understand the need to live with the power line some way, but I think there has to be species that are broader than they are high, and that have to have, so that they have some sort of effect over the street. And they also have, have to have a significant height, and they have to be close to the street. You can't put them back on the lawn and expect the same street tree effect. So I think the approach has to be looking, you can do every other tree in a different species, so you still get the unitary feel going down the street without, you know, living with a monoculture. You can go street to street, so you maybe lose a half a street at a time or something like that. But it's really important, if you look at it from a design perspective, that the trees form that sort of unity that the architecture of the street always doesn't have. The tree actually acts as creating that outdoor room more than the architecture in a small residential village where you only have two-story buildings. And finally, I did look at every red mark tree this weekend, painful as it was, and I would just put a pitch in for number 15, number 53, and then number 54, especially those last two. I just don't see the reason, and if you have to take 53 or 54, at least leave one of them, because you won't leave a half a block empty.
15 and 54, John?
53, 54, and 15.
Okay.
Otherwise, I agree, some of those have to come down, and I can live with them.
So John, I'm asking for your expertise here. You know what street trees would grow between the road and the sidewalk, without wrecking the sidewalk, and that would kind of grow around the power lines? Do you have like...
No.
No, no.
I would be willing to look at the list that Scott has, and look at it carefully, and see if I can come up with some better ideas. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't have a street tree list in the back of my head that I'd want to put out in a meeting right now.
So we have to kind of decide our direction, though. So, you know, if we're going to plant trees, are we planting trees that won't affect the overhead wires, or are we planting trees because now our wires are now buried? So I mean, there seems to be, if we're planting trees that are short, they're not going to provide the canopy, to John's point, but, so...
Apparently, you can't plant trees where the power lines are buried either.
I don't think that's true.
That's not true?
I don't think that's true.
Half the people here say true, some people say no.
If that's true, then here it is all...
We can put the power lines in the road.
Hey, one at a time, please.
Well, that's something we have to find an answer to.
Well, this goes back to the question of, does the village have the ability to law, does it have, the village law have the ability to override Public Service Commission standard? It kind of goes back to that, I think. Or, and/or the Central Hudson regulations there govern by, I think more legal research on what your position is still has to be done to clarify all that.
In consultation with our counsel, the village attorney, and I think in the same research that Sean came up with, that the village does not have the power to overrule the PSC. That's the guidance we're giving from our legal counsel.
Could the public get the citation for that? Is that a finding in law in court cases, or is that a state law, or is it some other regulatory? I'd be interested in knowing exactly what that legal references.
Okay, we'll ask for, ask for that reference.
God, we trust all others, where the data is.
And I think, you know, that, we'll give you just a second there, Frank. You know, there's the reference to us not wanting to, that I made, and not wanting to get into a brawl with Central Hudson, and I think there's some impression that the five of us just want to roll over and let Central Hudson come through and cut down every tree in sight. You know, we do, at least I understand that, you know, they are a big company. Big companies attract, you know, distrusts from the public. They raise our rates. The utility industry in general, they have kind of a scar on them from the project east of here, and I don't, myself, I don't think the rest of us, we're not here to protect the interests of Central Hudson, we're not here to defend Central Hudson. We're here to do what is best for the village of Rhinebeck. So it's not that we're rolling over and letting them do as they please, but we're trying to work with them. Central Hudson is not going away. Our trees are not going away. Our need for power is not going away. Our need for power is not going away. So we're trying to work with our tree commission and Central Hudson and all of you to come up with the, with the best long-term solution. One of the things that has been kind of understated, you know, we talk about prolonging this immediate process, but there is some urgency which the tree commission has identified. Not urgency as in tomorrow or the next day, but this canopy that we all love, it is aging out. The trees are not in the shape they were 10 years ago or 20 years ago. So we can sit here and enjoy them for as long as we want, but eventually, they're not going to be there anymore. So we need to plan now for the transition, whether that's to plant large trees that will give us a canopy and bury the lines, or plant small trees that will come under lines, or combination of all of the above. We all need to kind of come up with a unified plan and move, move towards that. Frank?
Yeah, just to support what John was saying, that the, that the section of a street is very important in conforming that space. So the wider street is, either the higher this, the closer to the street edge the curve those trees would have to be to form that space, or the larger the trees would have to be. So I simply, I hear the talk of a, an ornamental fruit tree as a pear tree, which is probably more adapted to a small pedestrian European street. So they'll, the orange trees, the blossoms covering a small pedestrian street, but that does not have anything to do with the type of trees that we see here in the village of Rhinebeck. Some of those trees are 50, 100, 150 years old. They're, they're majestic. I mean, nothing we could ever do will replace, would replace that. So it's very important, this section, and not, not only how close to the street that they go, but how far apart, depending on the species, they go. I'm sure you, people on the tree commission know about this more than a lot of us.
I'd like to make a statement too. Sorry, jump in here quick before we, along, along with what Heath had said, we're not just standing by. We're reaching out to Kevin Cahill, our assemblyman, to get information on what he can do to support, you know, us with, with dealing with utility. We're reaching out to other towns that have the same problem that we're having. The village of New Poles, we heard, had the problem. Sagrades has had the problem. Today, I've been made aware that Woodstock is currently going through the problem. So we have avenues of which we can also band together with people that are like us, that are dealing with the same issue that we're trying as a board to reach out and talk to. And we're also trying to deal with Central Hudson. We're trying to get the best information of what they plant, what they plan and how we can best approach what they're trying to do. We've reached out to them to talk to the director, Michael Lucci. We've reached out to their, their Department of Outage. They have a database that controls, lists every outage. And so we've made a request to the outage department to get that information. Whether they're going to deliver it or not remains to be seen. It's a holiday weekend and I'm hoping to hear that result tomorrow, but we'll have information on which we can now work with, of what other towns have done, what's, what our outage situation is like, what our assemblymen and other representatives can do that have dealt with these areas. So we know the best avenue and the best approach. And I think this board is looking at all of that, and that's why, that's really what I want to say. We're trying to, you know, reach out and make that happen.
Come on up so we can get you on the camera for all those sitting on the edge of their sofas at home.
Yeah, I just want to thank you guys for, for having us tonight. I think that's really important. And obviously, I don't think anybody implied that, that you guys were wanting, you know, in front of Central Hudson. I think we're just expressing our concern, so thank you for listening to us. I had a question, you know, through the years, I have maple tree right out of my driveway, and, and I get branches that fall down, you know, constantly. So, you know, I called the village a couple of times and the village told me, well, you know, it's dying, it's, it's dead. And I, when I, when I look at it, yeah, the top of it is, is, is pretty, you know, branches are, have no leaves and it looks pretty, pretty dead. But my question is, is there a, a maintenance that would, first of all, how long do these trees live, or supposed to be to live? And second, if we trimmed the, the trees, would we preserve them in some sort? Would they be able to live longer if we took the, the dead tree off of this tree? That's it. Thank you.
Well, I'm not an expert on that. Maybe, Nick, maybe you know, you're a landscaper. Nick's on the tree commission, Nick Monaco.
You mean by the village, would they be able to do a trim? No, I'm not saying the village. I'm saying in general, you know, apparently, I don't know each responsibility of the homeowner or the village. I'm not just talking about that. I'm just talking about preserving the trees, because it seems to me like, you know, people might have the impression that the tree is dying when it's just in bad shape, because it hasn't been made.
Another tree that lives is a dead tree. It's, it's a lot of factors, whether or not it's been attacked by insects or anything like that. So each tree is different, and each tree, yes, if you prune trees, they will, it will prolong their life because it'll keep other parts of the tree dying and things like that. But what it comes down to is if you trim a tree a certain way, nonstop, it keeps growing a certain way, and eventually it's, it's going to fail. You know, it's a living thing. It's going to die eventually.
And you need to trim like.
Yeah, like the, the tree starts to rot down the middle.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And then it'll split in half. So part of what we're trying to avoid is like, oh, that one split in half, fell in the road. Well, whoops, let's clean it up and, you know, as long as the canopy still looks good, you know, it's okay. So it's just a matter of, while the canopy is something that should be preserved, it's not going to last forever. So we should take steps while we can and get rid of the ones that need to go.
Sure.
Well, then, just to, to go talk to that, is if we continue with the power lines above and we continue to do it just that way, that's exactly right. And also, I notice of the trees that are, the red trees, most of them have been compromised by that very kind of trimming. So we would not only have longer lasting, better looking trees if we, if we got the power lines buried, there would be, you know, less maintenance all around, and the trees would look better if the power lines weren't compromising the trees. The trees have been there longer than, you know, some of the trees have been longer there than the power lines. The village is older than Central Hudson, they're the new covers in this situation. They should be the ones accommodating as far as my concerns.
Jim, then, Gia?
Final comments are made, I promise.
You're getting your 15 minutes out, aren't you?
I spent it all on talking here. As I see it, there's, there's alternatives here. We continue doing what we're doing, and Central Hudson comes in and they prune these trees the way that they're pruning them for years, and we continue to have problems with trees that are going to fail. Or we plant dwarf species that are not going to grow up into the power lines, but then we're not going to have the canopy that we have now. Or we plant back on the private property if the property owner gives us permission, and then when these maple trees, if we plant maple trees, grow up and start growing out into the power lines, Central Hudson is going to lop them off again. Okay? And they'll lop them off to the point that maybe the branches go up 10 feet over the top of the power lines, but then we don't have the canopy we want, because now all we see is a row of power poles and power lines. Go down to Hyde Park in the summertime, drive through Hyde Park, go back to Rhinebeck and drive up Route 9 in Hyde Park. You tell me which one you prefer. Which one would you rather look at?
Walk through Hyde Park in the summertime.
Walk, yeah, walk through Hyde Park. How much hotter is it down there than it is here? Because there's no shade. Okay? So what's the alternative? Put the power lines in the ground, and that's the direction we need to go.
That's right.
And we can plant the trees, make our village, make our village look beautiful like we are accustomed to. We don't have to worry about a tree failing because it's been pruned improperly. We don't have to worry about a, a tree being damaged because of that, and we have the beautiful village that we used to.
More beautiful.
All right? So, you know, I, as I see it, there's one alternative here. Right? And it takes willing partners to do it. That's it.
That's the story.
Thanks, Jim.
This is one of those amazing times that I'm in total agreement with Jim Ridden, and this is going to be my last.
All the worst.
Happy Valentine's Day. And this is my last time, I swear tonight too, but we did reach out and I spoke to both the government of Saratoga Springs and Southampton, and they both went through this exact same thing. We're much more like Saratoga Springs in burying our power lines, and they were able to do it, both of them were able to do it. They use different financial permutations to do it, some bonding, some 20-year tax incrementation. But Saratoga Springs, I think, is one, we don't, we're not inventing the wheel, and there are other communities out there that are very similar to us that have done this successfully.
Thank you. Yes, sir. This is your first time, right?
Yeah. My name's John Halpern, I live in the village of Chiefer on Trinity Place. We started off the meeting with the tree commission saying that they want to take down the trees. I've heard one supporting voice seconding that during the evening. Everybody very eloquently has spoken against this idea. I think it's only fair to the tree commission guys that they go back and have a chance to respond to everything they've heard tonight, because there's been a lot of points that I'm sure some, it was points that they hadn't thought about. So I just hope that they have a chance to respond to all, I think, the very strong suggestions that have been made today.
Thank you. I think at the last meeting, you know, I kind of gave a little summary there, where the tree commission made their points, Central Hudson made their points, the people who want to save the trees and the canopy made their points. And the bottom line is, everybody's right for a different reason, and that's our task is to put that all together and come up with the best solution today in the short term and for a long-term solution. If we look at the biggest area of impact, which is that corridor along Route 9, there are 25 trees identified, and I don't know the, the history going too far back, but it appears that probably some of the trees closer to the hospital have already been lost. I know we lost one this year to a vehicle, to a truck hitting a limb, and of the 25 remaining, we've identified 20% of those for removal, and those that we identified for removal were primarily the ones that were not contributing to the canopy at all anymore. So we're, they're, they're disappearing at a pretty rapid pace, so we need to come up with a, with a plan. I think that's what everybody has given us ideas to move forward with that. And we do need to turn ideas into action, whoever made that point very clear. Anybody else? And you guys got anything else?
Thank you for coming out and sharing your thoughts about this issue. Nice to have you.